At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for November 17th, 2023 at 1:22. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you all for joining us today. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speakers when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Raish in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to everyone. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, we have no registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Next on our agenda is action item number one. Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, President Fowler. The first item for the board's consideration is the 2022-2023 financial audit report. But first, I'd like to extend our gratitude and thanks to the entire financial services team and our partners at Whitley Penn. There's a large amount of work and time that goes into the annual audit, and I want to express some my sincere appreciation for the hours and efforts that go into this process. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Darla Moss. She's going to come forward and introduce our partners from Whitley Penn, who will give us a brief presentation about the audit. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. President Fowler, good afternoon, trustees. The district is required to complete the annual comprehensive report, financial report, to be submitted to TEA by November 27th. The Board of Trustees, of course, has to approve that report today. The district typically partners with Whitley Penn, and our partner that we typically work with is Selena Setasettis. She is not able to be with us today, but there is a partner from Whitley Penn, Mr. Roger Tovar. He is an audit partner as well, and he has over 15 years of audit experience in the public sector, higher education, and several other industries. Just like to take one quick moment to, you know, extend what Dr. Wertz said about the team. We work very closely together with Whitley Penn and have her several years, and we have some of our team members on our side of the house that are here. I want to recognize Ms. Carla Martin. You're familiar with her. She leads the work. Her and her team have done an outstanding job. We also have our executive director, Ms. Bridget Lewis, and we have our Director of Accounting, Mr. Sean Guan, who recently joined our team. They've done some outstanding work in streamlining the process for the audit. Each year, it gets better and better, and we're very excited about that. And we're excited about our partnership with Whitley Penn, so we're going to have Mr. Roger come up, and he'll do a brief presentation about the audit.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I do have a presentation today. Again, my name is Roger Tovar. I'm a partner at Whitley Penn out of the Fort Worth office, and we did conduct the 2023 fiscal, fiscal year 2023 financial statement audit, and my presentation is here. I can use this. Okay, there you go. So I'll start off with the audit team. I won't go into a lot of detail, just kind of outlining who the team was. And again, I'd like to thank management and the rest of the team for putting up with us during the audit. There's a lot of requests that go into an audit. There's a lot of work on both sides, and we were able to complete it without any issues. And so, thank the school district's management for that. As far as the purpose of the audit is, obviously, it is to express an opinion on the financial statements. And so, as far as opinions, there's a few options here. I won't go into detail on what all those mean, but on the right-hand side, it is an unmodified opinion. That is the option, the highest level of assurance that you can obtain on your financial statements. Anything outside of that, you're not obtaining the highest level of assurance that you can obtain. So I'll just, you know, kind of break in a little bit going forward. We are issuing an unmodified opinion over your financial statements as well as your federal major programs, and I have a few slides on that later on. As far as the audit process itself, just wanted to outline here, we do come out here a couple of times a year for a few weeks. We come out earlier in the summer, a little after year end, but the process itself, you know, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. Usually, it takes anywhere between six and seven months. You can see here, it starts back in March and April. Every audit that we perform is a risk-based audit, and so that risk assessment drives the rest of the audit, and that leads over to the last step on here, which is issuing an opinion on your financial statements, which is what we're doing today. As far as some of that risk assessment, we are required to look in there and figure out what areas we're going to focus on, and that, again, is driven by that risk assessment. On the screen, you can see some of those areas that we focus our audit procedures on, and payroll, obviously, is a big expenditure for the district. Non-payroll procurement has a lot of compliance requirements, IT, federal programs, and then some of the revenues that come through on your child nutrition fund. So those are some of the areas that we focus on, test controls, perform walkthroughs, things of that sort. As far as some of those substantive procedures that we perform, it includes a lot of analytical procedures on your financial statements, some predictive tests over some of your revenue sources, individual transactions, vouching, confirmations with third parties. We do obtain a lot of information directly from TEA, just to make sure that whatever TEA has matches up with the financial statements that the district is issuing. As far, again, as far as your audit report, we are issuing, or we did issue, an unmodified opinion over your financial statements. So again, that is the highest level of assurance that you can obtain on your financial statements. We're also required to report on whether or not there were any internal control findings related to financial reporting. We did not have any internal control findings. We also do not, reporting no findings related to compliance. As far as your federal programs, you do receive over $148 million in federal funds for the fiscal year 2023, so that did trigger a single audit. So you can see here, there were three major programs in the current year, S.R. funding, special ed, and also the emergency connectivity fund. So that alone, right there, is over $90 million of federal funds that we audited. We are required to also issue an opinion on those federal programs, and we also issue an unmodified opinion over each major program. We're also required to report if we come up across any significant findings as far as compliance or controls over compliance. We don't have any control issues or compliance issues for when it comes to your federal major programs. As far as your financial statements, just briefly, this is your government-wide financial statement, so this includes all your funds, includes all your long-lived assets, as well as your long-term liabilities. You can see your total assets are over $2.1 billion. A big chunk of that is capital assets at over $1.1 billion. The other significant item there will be your cash and investments. That's about $856 million. Your outflows and inflows, you can see them on the screen, there's $163 million and $223. Those are mainly related to your pension and OPEB liabilities. On the liability side, that is about $1.8 billion at the end of fiscal year '23. 1.3 of that has to do with your bonds. Then your net pension liability and net OPEB liability is $241 and $121 million there. So your pension and OPEB liabilities are a non-cash liability, but those are required to be presented on your financial statement, so that's what that is. And then, at the end of the day there, your net position is sitting at $260 million at the end of fiscal year '23. And the next couple of slides are just going to show you what your net pension and OPEB liabilities have been over the last five years, including the end of fiscal year '23. So you can see here, at the end of fiscal year '23, your pension liability was a little bit over $241 million, and that fluctuates over the years, and you can kind of see how it's been for the past four or five years. Similar to your OPEB, at the end of this year, you're at $120.7 million. That's actually a decrease from last year, and you can see how it's been trending over the last five years. The next few slides is just on your general fund, so the previous ones were overall. This one's just general fund. So your actual revenues in your general fund were $587 million, which were over your final budgeted amounts by $5 million. Your expenditures were at $544 million, which was less than final budgeted amounts of, by about $20 million. Your other financing uses of $72 million were in line with your budget, and your final fund balance had a decrease of $28 million. At the end of the year, your general fund has $269 million in fund balance. And then, this here just breaks out your revenues by type, so you can see your local revenues. Again, this is just your general fund. You can see your local revenues there, which includes your property taxes. It's by far the biggest source of revenue for your general fund, and then it compares it to your final budget. So you can see here, all your revenues, except for your state revenue, were over budget. The state revenue was under budget by $1 million, which is not significant overall. Overall, again, your revenues were over your final budget. This is just another way of seeing your revenue sources. You can see, again, your biggest source is your property taxes. The second one there, 26% is your state aid, so between those two, that makes up about 90% of your revenues in your general fund. Same type concept here, but this is on the expenditure side. You can see here, your expenditures compared to your actual by function here. All of these here are under budgets, which is good. That's what you're required to do. And so, you can see here, by far, instruction and related services is the highest expenditure that you have in your general fund. Again, another way of seeing that is this graph here. Instruction makes up about 60% of your expenditures in the general fund. All the other ones compared to that one are fairly smaller. You do have student support and facilities, which are over 10%. Everything else is under 10%. Then the fund balance in your general fund here is just a breakdown. You can see, again, I went back, we went back about four or five years here. At the end of this year, your fund balance was at $269 million. It's just a breakdown. Unassigned is your biggest portion of your fund balance, and you can see here, that one actually increased from last year, from 165 to 177, and then you can see how the other ones compare to the previous four or five years. Another metric would be your unassigned and assigned fund balance, so anything that's not restricted in any way. And then, calculating your days of operation, and you can see here, at the end of, for fiscal year 2023, that amount is $252 million, which is about 46%, which is roughly 165 days of operation. TEA recommends for school districts to be anywhere around 25%. So over the last four or five years, the district has exceeded that recommendation, and you can see how it's been trending over the last four years. The last couple of slides that I have is just required communications. As auditors, we are required to communicate to you some items, and so I have them on here. We do have an engagement letter dated March 8th, so that's kind of when the whole process started, and then we're here in November issuing the opinion. So again, it is a long process. As far as our risk assessment that I mentioned earlier, we do design our audit to address both management override of controls as well as revenue recognition. So anytime we're performing testing, we're aware that there could be management override of control somewhere, and revenue recognition's another risk. But then I go back to, there wasn't any findings in current year, so we didn't have any issues when it came to those. The district accounting policies and methods are appropriate in accordance with industry standards. This year, GASB 96 was implemented, and that was similar to GASB 87, which was the previous year. And so, your financial statements that you have do include some of the GASB 96 implementation, some of that impact on there. There should be also footnotes on that for more detail. We're also required to communicate to you if we had any difficulties or disagreements with management during the audit. We did not have any difficulties or disagreements with management. We also obtained a representation letter from management. This was prior to us issuing our final report, and that's just management representing to us what their responsibilities are when it comes to the audit. We're not aware of any situations in which management consulted with other accountants on any sort of accounting or reporting matters. We also discussed the application of accounting principles and auditing standards during the audit with management, and our responses to those inquiries were not a condition to our retention as auditors. And then finally, your financial statements do include a couple of estimates that we consider to be significant, state aid, and again, I talked a little bit about OPEB and pension, so those two are significant estimates, and then the allowance for doubtful accounts, which mainly has to do with your property taxes. We do look into the factors that go into those, and we consider those to be reasonable.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? So, Mr. Tovar, to bottom line it, for all of us that are not into all the numbers and all the graphs, AISD is in great shape financially.
It was a clean audit, no issues, no findings, no control issues, so that's a good thing, yes.
And the unmodified opinion means you don't see that you have to do any kind of changes, or there's no questions in any of the finances, that it's unmodified, that we're good to go?
Right.
Okay, and I think that is a very nice compliment to our financial team with Darla Moss and her team, and we thank them so much for keeping us afloat and keeping us in good financial state, and we appreciate you with your presentation and all the work that went into this presentation and all the numbers. But you can give us a clean bill of health, correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Justin, you have a question or comment?
No motion.
Oh, for a motion. That's okay. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just do have a couple of comments, not questions, so I really appreciate the way that you put this together and how understandable it is, Mr. Tovar, because, you know, for those who just watched it, it seems like you just came up here and did a pro forma presentation, but it summarizes a lot of stuff. I just want to point out that this, I've been involved in the district's finances in some way since I got on the Financial Futures Committee about 12 years ago, and just want to say how proud that I am, both not as a trustee, but also as a parent and a citizen in this district, that in that entire time, every year when we get the financial reports, they're always stellar, and just goes to show the strength of the financial responsibility programs that we have in place and our financial staff. And I just wanted to point out, if we could, if we could go back to the slide with the general fund expenditures, budget to actual, or either the general fund pie chart, either one of those would be good.
On the expenditures?
Yeah.
Okay, right there.
Yeah, that one looks great. I always want to take the opportunity, when we have these financial presentations like this, to point out how we actually operate, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, and, you know, it's real easy for some people to take, you know, throw peanuts at us from the gallery, because we're "government," and so, government, we must be bad at spending money, we must have fat and waste, and we're spending it in all the wrong places. But every time this comes up, not only do we have very stringent controls in place, but when you look at where our money actually goes, I think it just shows those naysayers wrong every single year, that we're spending, I mean, if you add instruction-related services, student support services, and instructional and school leadership, so those are the three areas where we can say, these are focused on the kids and on our staff and teachers. That's almost, I think it's over, I'm bad at math, that's over 80% of the budget. And when you add in sort of things that we just have to do, facilities, maintenance, operations, we've got to keep the lights on, I think it's about 92% of our budget. And our general administration portion of our budget, that's where everybody thinks the fat is, that's 2.8%. So I think we not only are very fiscally responsible, we're also spending in a responsible way, because we're putting it where our kids are, and that's the most important asset that we have, if I can make a financial-related pun. The other thing I wanted to take a quick look at was the general fund fund balance bar chart. Go back, one more.
Oh, fund balance.
There we go.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say kudos and thanks to our financial staff here. You know, you have to be fiscally responsible to have a fund balance to begin with, let alone grow one, and that's what we've shown here. But we did, I think strategically as a district, decide a couple of years ago that we wanted to responsibly draw down on that fund balance, to spend on things that matter to us in a purposeful way, and you can see that we're starting to do that. And just want to thank financial staff for identifying the ways that we can responsibly do that, and that's why you see that assigned fund balance, I think, growing. And with that, I would move to approve the annual financial audit report for the 22-23 fiscal year.
Thank you. I have a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second from Dr. Raish. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is... We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
A motion from Ms. Richardson and a second by?
A second.
Mr. Chapa? Please vote. Yes, please vote. Motion carries. We now move to our discussion item. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. This afternoon, we have Dr. Hill here today to provide us with the required school safety campus intruder detection audit update. Dr. Hill?
Good afternoon, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz. Again, just a brief presentation on the requirement from TEA and the Texas School Safety Center about school safety. I always try to put this in some context around the many things that we do in school safety, and what we're going to talk about today is just one piece of it, and that's the intruder detection audit, or as TEA calls it, the IDA. But the district has many, many different layers of school security. This was initiated back in June of 2022 by the governor's charge that mandated in-person and unannounced random visits or audits from TEA or Region 11. TEA then contracted out to Region 11 to actually conduct the audits. The initial timeline was from September 22 to May 23, but that's been extended into this current year, and it will likely be there for the foreseeable future. The audits are conducted, and the results are sent to TEA and the superintendents electronically. The audit is in three different phases. One, there's a random, phase one is a random exterior door audits, and the office procedures for when visitors check into schools, they audit that. Phase two is the exterior door audit of all doors, and the weekly log check, campuses are required to check and log their exterior door checks every week, and that checking of that log is a part of the audit. And then, phase three is the interior doors and how you manage those internally. The audit findings and results, and so, once we receive the audits, we, once the audit is completed, or in the past, we would wait maybe two or three days for an email, now there is a TEA dashboard that we get that information immediately. And what you can see at the bottom right is a snapshot of where we were at, I think that was in October, the end of October. 24% of our campuses had been audited with three interior findings, which are really not reported, they're just internal, and then there's one corrective action that's required. If there's a corrective action that's ever required, there's staff training that's required, and we conducted that. The information has to be presented to the school safety committee for review, and that is scheduled at the next school safety committee's meeting, I think that's scheduled for November the 7th, and then there's a board presentation that's required. That's why we're here today. And then, after all of that's done, then we'll have to report back to TEA and the Texas School Safety Center, and that report is due on December the 5th. And so, what we've done is, the finding that we had, we've addressed all of the requirements, and this will be next to presenting to the safety committee, the last part of it, and then we'll be in line to report back to TEA that we're in compliance. So, that being said, we just take any questions that you have. Again, this is more of a compliance piece for presenting right here.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Hill. One of the questions I would have for you is, right now, our parents care a lot about safety. They want to know about these findings. How do we communicate this well to them so they are confident in our safety procedures?
Well, and I think that's something that we try to do every day. As I said, this one piece is a small piece of the many layers of security that we are there. We hope that when parents come to our schools, that they see the safety measures that are already in place, that they have to enter through a security vegetable, that they have a procedure for checking in in the office and checking out, that they see staff being vigilant about any visitors that are in the buildings, directing them to make sure that they go into the office. And so, we don't want just these audits to be the safety measure in school. We want it to be basically a way of life today.
Thank you. Thank you for what y'all do. I know, as a trustee, all of us are thankful for the work that you do keeping our students safe. And as a parent, I'm thankful. My kids are here in district, and so, seeing it from this side of the dais and also being out with our community, it just matters what you guys do, and so, thank you for this, and thank you for sharing with us the results.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Hill, I appreciate it, as always. Don't have any questions, except I wanted to clarify, the next safety meeting, safety committee meeting, I might have misheard you, I thought you said November 7th, but...
It's the 27th.
The 27th. Okay, I just wanted to double-check that.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Hill, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to point out, and to Ms. Richardson's point, that, I mean, I think these, the data that you provided shows that we are doing a good job at keeping our schools safe. It's only 24% of our campuses, but we're a very large district, and I'm looking here in it, during the time of review, we're looking at five high schools, three junior highs, and it looks like a handful of elementary schools. We have massive high schools. And so, we're talking about looking at safety procedures and checks as it pertains to buildings with hundreds of doors, thousands of students, hundreds of people exterior to the school community itself, coming and going every day. And during this review period, there were only three findings, one of which looks like there was probably one door that was unlocked when it shouldn't have been, and the other one was that, I'm guessing, we didn't, we weren't able to immediately produce the log showing that we were doing what we were doing.
I think that's a good point. The work was actually done, it's just there was a sub at the desk that couldn't get into the system to show the auditor that, look, we actually did it, and so...
And I think that, I mean, I think that's amazing. I mean, it's like a 99.99% success rate, and so, we always want to strive to be as close to 100% as we can.
Absolutely.
But I think this shows that we're making every effort that we can to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Thank you, Dr. Hill, for your presentation. I think our parents, our community, our students, our teachers should feel safe that we're doing everything possible to ensure their safety, and thank you for the report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we have no registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. We now move to our superintendent's report. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since the last report at our last board meeting. As everyone knows, the Texas Rangers may have won the World Series, but it was our Fine Arts Department that took home the trophy at the World Series Celebration Parade. All six of our high school marching bands, drill teams, and color guard squads helped kick off the parade before more than 500,000 people, and they had an outstanding performance. They put this together in just a couple of days, and it was amazing, and I want to extend our gratitude to Dr. Christopher Anderson and his team, and all the directors over the teams at each of the schools, and of course, our students for making the day memorable for so many people in our community and our families. And I also want to extend my gratitude to Corey Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language and Peach Elementary for having me out at their Thanksgiving feast yesterday. It was great to serve lunch. I got to wear my hairnet. Yes, I did. And I also had a chance to visit with so many students and staff members. This week is Family Involvement Week, so we're blessed to have so many outstanding families supporting our students and staff at each of our schools, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I hope that you get to enjoy your time off with your family and friends and make lots of new memories. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with reports? Do I have any trustees with reports? Seeing none, I just want to wish everyone here and everyone watching a very, very happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy time with family and friends, and we'll see you back after the holidays.